Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, so let me go ahead and. All right. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Here we are again back on Zoom. We thought we were going to be in person, but we're back here. So we'll go ahead and start with roll call, please.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Lucy Lawson.
Here.
Lucy Marquez.
Here.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Here.
President McAvoy.
Present. All right. Well, welcome everyone to our August 11th School Board Meeting, the first one of this school year. We're so happy to be back and have those of you attending virtually. Welcome and welcome to all our panelists. And it's nice to see board members and all our district staffs. So welcome, everyone. We're excited for a new school year and with many more kids in person this year than last year, which is great. And. Bienvenidos si necesita interpretación en español. Por favor, busque la información en el chat. Gracias y bienvenidos. And I've posted links, actually Eliana has posted links in the chat for the agenda as well as how to sign up to make comments. And maybe Eliana, if you don't mind, if you could repost those again in a couple of minutes, just because, as you know, when you join, you don't get to see the previous chats. If you'd like to speak to the board, you can fill out the Google Doc. I know a couple of you have already done that. And be sure to include your name so we know who to unmute when the time comes. You'll be given three minutes tonight, and if you need translation, we will provide more time. And if the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, you will be called during oral communication. If the item is on the agenda, you'll be called when that item is being addressed. And as a reminder, the meetings for board business, we certainly welcome you to ask a quick question to us in chat. Clarifying questions, that sort of thing, but we ask that we're not carrying on dialogue in the chat box because we're trying to hold a meeting. So thank you for your cooperation there. And as a reminder, since we're meeting virtually, all the votes will be by roll call, and we are recording the meeting. All right. So again, welcome. And let's see, changes to the agenda.
Do we want to move 11.7 to consent? I forget which one it is. It's the approval of the 2021 Consolidate Application for Federal Funding Programs.
Good with me? Is that okay with others? Okay, good. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Mike, make the motion. Maria, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Lucy Lawson.
Hi.
Lucy Marquez. Vice President.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. All right. So I believe we have one comment under oral communication because it's on Connect Charter School. And I don't think that's on the agenda tonight, is it? I don't think so. So why don't we unmute Haley Dupuy? I'm not sure how you say your name, Haley. I'm sorry, your last name. D U P U Y. Yeah. It's weird.
So I have allowed her to talk.
Okay, great. Hi. Welcome. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Dupuy.
Dupuy, thank you for the reminder.
That's okay. So I don't have my written comment with me that I submitted. I just wanted to introduce myself again in person as the new Director of Educational Services at Connect Community Charter. And just say a little bit about one of our new endeavors this year related to social emotional learning. So we've created an advisory period that will be daily and will be solely committed to social emotional learning. So we'll be using the curriculum from six seconds during most of our first trimester and then supplementing with other materials to focus on building class culture and and school culture. So we are super excited to launch this new format and then hopefully be weaving in our social emotional learning throughout the day in our project-based learning. And I just wanted to put it out there, if anyone's listening and would like to contact us and talk more about what we are doing, we're definitely open to discussing it with other people in our community. That's it.
All right. Well, thank you very much Haley for coming to our meeting and introducing yourself again. We appreciate the email you sent earlier. And welcome. Well, you know Redwood City, but.
I do. Yeah. Well, thank you very much. And you can mute me back and I'll be here listening. Thanks a lot.
All right. Thanks. Have a good evening. Okay. So. Let's see. Okay, we're on to the bond program update. Looks like you've been up to a few things, Mr. Diaz and crew.
Yes, just a few things.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Will.
Dealing with a camera glitch issue right now, so I'm going to turn my camera off. To save everyone from seeing her, right? You guys see the tracking matrix?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, great. And you guys can hear me clearly.
Yes.
Perfect. So reminder that the yellow shows what has changed since we shared this with you guys last before summer. So at Clifford, construction is complete and we received DSA certification letter today. That was, that was great. We have received the DSA certification letter for the Fair Oaks site. We've received the DSA certification letter for the completed Hawes, formerly Hawes 909 Roosevelt Avenue site as well as the Henry Ford site. Construction is complete at Hoover. And the DSA certification closeout process is in progress. We received DSA certification on the Kennedy Modernization Project. Reminder that we are still working on the final parking lot expansion. That is demoing our old bond program offices on Goodwin and completing a final parking lot expansion. Construction is completed Roosevelt and the DSA certification and closeout process is in progress. Same stands for Roy Cloud. And Adelante Selby Construction is complete and we've received the DSA certification letter. So you can see that, you know, five to six years ago, we started with a blank matrix and how close we are getting to fully graying out our entire program matrix. So this is really exciting. Does anyone have any questions about the high-level progress tracking for each of these projects? All right. We're going to move on to our construction photo update. We are excited to show you how much we completed over summer. Okay, here we go. Okay. You guys seeing? For your preview. So you guys are seeing the full screen title page right now, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Starting off at Clifford, this drone photo was taken this morning. You can see the completed asphalt replacement, fresh striping as well as a few of the other projects we've completed. Solar and outdoor learning. Court. This overhead view shows the completed outdoor learning court between the two classroom wings as well as an alternate view of the recently completed asphalt replacement and strike. Garfield. A long way since the last time we shared photos of Garfield. So you can see the two-story classroom building in the back of the campus taking shape.
So less than two months ago, this building was still around vertically.
Don, you broke out right as you, right as you said that.
No, I'm just saying that less than two months ago, nothing was up vertically at the site. So.
There you go. So this is the front entrance to the school and a part of the parking lot expansion in progress. Fresh paint. You can see that the front parking lot expansion and front entryway are starting to take shape. This picture was taken at 6:00 AM Monday morning of this week. We just finished the full parking lot expansion, including fresh top coat and striping on the area right in front of the admin entryway. We finished the work on Friday at the end of the day. And so we came in early on Monday to get a picture with, with no cars as fresh as could be. Moving on to Hoover. You can see the completed gym. About five other smaller projects at Hoover, asphalt projects, playground projects, the new drop-off on the far left. Really excited. How far we've come at the site. This is an alternate view that focuses on the gym. Better shows the colored panels and some of the front gym entryway. View of the back of the gym. And you can see the ball wall there in the center of the back wall of the gym. New drop-off.
So and all the fencing is complete now at that area.
Yeah, this was taken on Friday of last week, so still slightly in progress, but you can see the additional parking stalls in the two-lane drop-off. I know this side is really excited about. Then the interior of the gym. The left side, you can see the new stage. The right side, the new bleachers. As I mentioned earlier, Kennedy School, our final project is the final parking lot expansion. So this is, this is where our, the two portables we're running our bond program office out of for the last five years are gone. The parking lot expansions in progress, you can see some of the gutters are for our alternative, formerly John Gill. The building has completely taken shape. Alternate view from the back, you can see the outdoor learning area starting to take, learning and play area starting to take form. Alternate view. Panoramic. Helps put this rear area into perspective. And then this is in the existing main building. And this is a recently completed steam lab. Building A or the old admin building. For those who know the site. Roosevelt's completed stair mural. Nice finishing touch at the Roosevelt site. Moving on, tap school. Nice overhead. An alternate angle that kind of brings dimension to the height of the building, what's going on on top. Couple videos to share as well. So within the within the structure is actually an outdoor. Can you guys see my mouse right now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, within this area. Actually, outdoor open patio, that's an extension of an outdoor learning area as well. So this is kind of a view inside looking out.
And there's the steam lab that will have a nano wall in it to go outside or have it opened up.
Cool. Library reception area starting to take form. And then this is a bird's eye view from the top of the amphitheater. Taking out into the new open area. There we go. That was my last slide. Does anyone have any questions? All righty. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Will. Thanks, Don. That's great.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you so much for the overview and the photos. That's really great, what progress you've been making. And I did want to just say there's several comments in the chat from parents. Just saying that this is wonderful to see as well. So, great. Yes. All right. So we are on to the next item, which is the Measure T ribbon cutting Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion School.
So we have a video tonight, and this took place later in the spring, past spring. And so you'll get to see this in a few moments, and I think Kyle, go ahead and show it.
Hi, my name is John Baker, and I have the pleasure of being the Superintendent for the Redwood City Elementary School District. This video is to give thanks to our community for the passing of the Measure T bond. One of the breathtaking views that you'll see from this video is the new office building of the Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion School. It's the front entrance and it is gorgeous. I invite you all to come and see it and also speak with their great principal, Warren Cedar, so he can give you a view of what's been taking place here at Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Janet Lawson, and I'm a trustee for the Redwood City School District, and I'm also a parent in the district. This beautiful new building at Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion could not be possible without the support of the amazing community around the Redwood City School District. In 2015, the voters went to the polls and said yes to Measure T. This authorized the school district to move forward with the necessary modernizations and upgrades around the entire school district. Our CSD is fortunate to have such a supportive community. We know that with the support of everyone around the school district, our students will do better and will improve their success. We thank the Redwood City community for believing in our students and for allowing the district to modernize and upgrade the facilities around the entire school district. I know that these modernizations and improvements will benefit students for many generations to come.
Hello. Hola. I'm Director Warren Cedar, the very proud principal of Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion School. I've worked on this campus for the last 12 years, and I feel very blessed and honored to see the wonderful changes brought about by Measure T. Families and visitors come onto our campus, they can see the wonderfully restructured front office that is modernized, including a family center. This family center is something new here at the school to reach the needs of our families that need support in our community. So it's very much appreciated. Also in our front lot, you'll see the EV chargers, and I really, I really appreciate looking to the future, using clean energy for our school. We also have some things that people might not notice as much, but I'm very appreciative of because they make the school more safer and more secure. We have security fencing, we're able to lock and secure the campus during the school hours between eight and three. We have a video camera surveillance system that I can, I can log on, and it just makes us feel safer. Never underestimate a coat of paint, fresh paint. The school looks great, and I know the students have great pride in coming to the school, as do I and my staff. We're just very appreciative to the Redwood City community for approving Measure T and the voters. And I'm just very, very proud to be working at Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion School. Muchisimas gracias por toda la ayuda en mejorar nuestra plantel escolar. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucia Belver Amon. I'm in fifth grade. I'm the student council president.
Hi, I'm Maddie V. I'm in fifth grade and I'm Adelante Selby's vice president.
Some things I want to talk about is the new office is very beautiful and it's more convenient because it's in a school entrance, so it's easier to find.
We have solar panels that powers over 90% of the school's electricity. And we have, we just got a new paint job to make it all look cohesive and better together.
I'm very happy about these improvements because it's making me very, very proud to be at the school. Thank you, Redwood City voters, for approving Measure Ts to make my school a bunch better.
Hi, my name is Jenny Rito, and I'm a local aftertune neighbor to Adelante Selby. I'm here to talk about all the great benefits, even as a neighbor, that Measure T has provided the school here. I love so many things that Measure T has provided. So for example, I love the new office that's here. It's great. Before, it was really hard to find the office, and you actually had to walk into the campus to actually see it. So it's great to see that we don't have to do that anymore. I think it's also a great safety measure. As you're walking into campus, another thing Measure T has provided that I was really happy about is the safe walking path. All the way on to, from, from the street to the office, there's a separate walking path, separate from any vehicles that may be passing, and I think that's fabulous. I'm also really excited that Measure T has provided a whole bunch of increased security on campus with all the security cameras. So now, actually, thanks to Measure T, it's a, the security actually ties in to the principal's phone app, and he'll be able to capture things and send it if anything happens to the police department, you know, even if it happens on the weekend. Also really like the tables that Measure T provided. It's great. They can have more outdoor activities there because there's umbrellas for shade as well.
Please remember that any proceeds from this bond are not utilized for any type of expenses or programs that are associated with the school district or any of the schools within the school district. Thank you so much for your support in supporting the bond measure. It has made such improvements with all the schools in the Redwood City School District.
All right. Good job. I see a lot of clapping with the panelists that the audience cannot see. That's great. Thank you for the video. Yeah, and we're getting a few comments in the chat as well. So thanks for the support from the community. All right. It's a great way to start the meeting. So we have the bond program consent items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Maria and then Cecilia with the second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Lucy Marquez.
Hi.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. All right. Thank you, Will and Don and the whole bond team. Really appreciate all your work.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So let's see, we're on to discussion items, and I know we've got a lot of people in the audience who are interested in the next item, so I will turn it over to Dr. Baker.
Yes, and thank you so much, Lisa and board members, and welcome back and welcome back, community. And many of our teachers and staff members and our administrators I see are also on this, viewing this meeting this evening too. So Kyle, I believe you have the link that was sent to you by Jorge, if I'm not mistaken. And we can start there. I will begin and then I will turn it over to my colleagues who are going to give a great amount of information that we have been working on for the last, I want to say, actually July. It was even during our vacations that we were having to work, and a couple of my colleagues couldn't even take all their vacation because of what took place at the state legislature on July 9th. So I'm just waiting to see when we'll get that up.
The. John, I have the video, but I don't have another link.
You don't have another link?
No.
Okay. Wendy, do you have the link by any chance? It's mine, mine is added on top of your presentation.
Yeah, Kyle, it's the one I emailed you actually.
Okay.
Thank you. I know you have many to manage tonight. Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, Kyle.
So I have the health and safety. Is that the, is that the one?
That's the right one.
Okay, I had that one queued up when it was, when you said Jorge, kind of threw me off a little bit.
Okay, right.
There you go.
Oh, perfect. Thanks so much, Kyle. So this is where we are going to begin, but before beginning with the health and safety update, I want to give a little bit of an overview before we start this evening. There is a lot of information. Next slide, please, Kyle, I'm sorry. There's a lot of information in regard to in-person and on-campus for this school year. There's a lot of information in regard to in-person and on-campus for this school year of 2021, 22. And please remember that this meeting is being recorded and you can always go back to view it to get additional, to look at the information if you didn't catch it, to refresh your memory and then to also at any time pose any questions to us. And as we finish tonight's presentation, we will take questions and answers that are in the chat and hopefully be able to answer them within the next few days and put them up online. Now, next slide, Kyle, please. As we begin the 21, 22 school year, I definitely want to welcome back all our students that are coming back to in-person instruction this year and also to welcome back our parents. The last 18 months have been difficult and I want to definitely give a shout out to all our teachers and our staff and our administrators for everything that they created and made possible for the fall of 2020 and also when we started January of 2021. And then also we went forward in the spring of 2021 with further expansion. But I want to definitely make you aware that in the 2021, 22 school year, all Redwood City schools within the district will welcome students back in person. This in-person will be five days a week and we will be following all the health and safety protocols that have been put in place by the Samatay County Office of Education's pandemic recovery framework. It has been updated since we left at the end of June and you will see links to that later on this evening. Next slide, please. So the current COVID-19 situation in Samatay County. And this information that I'm going to give to you in the next few moments is information that I received at yesterday's superintendent's meeting. All 23 superintendents met with the County Office of Education Superintendent Nancy McGee and we received some additional information. I wanted to share this with you. So Kyle, next slide, please. So on this slide, you will see that of those residents in Samatay County that are 12 years old and above, 90% of them are fully vaccinated. Of those who live within Samatay County, who are between the ages of 12 and 17, 68% are fully vaccinated. When you see on this slide, Alameda County, Contra Costa County and San Francisco County, you will see in those counties that the transmission rate is two times higher than what exists in Samatay County. The current spread is largely among those people who are unvaccinated. Most severe symptoms among unvaccinated adults. Most Samatay County children tend to have mild to moderate symptoms. Dr. Morrow, who is the health officer, is encouraging that all schools open to in-person instruction and that schools are safe for children. Next slide, Kyle. So learning safely on the Redwood City School District campuses for the 2021, 22 school year. Next slide, Kyle. So Samatay County Office of Education continues to update its pandemic recovery framework. It's aligned with the county health department, CDPH and CDC. All students and staff are to wear face coverings indoor. They will be optional outdoors. Physical distancing is not needed in classrooms due to other mitigation practices such as face coverings. All students and staff are to stay home when they're experiencing any type of COVID-19 symptoms. It's very important that we continue with our hygiening protocols that we had in place prior to school ending last year for students that were at the school site. So we're going to continue with our hand washing, we're going to continue to promote it. And then when we get to other slides, there'll be further information about protocols that are going to be in place. Next slide, please. So learning safely on the campuses. While it's not required, the Redwood City School District is going to continue with daily wellness surveys for both students and employees. And we are going to continue with testing. And more information in the following slides will be presented with what that will look like. Next slide, please. So you're probably wondering, how do I find these guidelines? How do I find updates on the website? So when you go to our website, you'll see this banner. It's the roadmap to learning safely during my new school year. You'll tap on the link where the red arrow is and it will give you up-to-date information. If you decide not to go in that format and want to just go to the website and scroll down on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll go to a title where it says, "I'm looking for", and here it says, "Public Health Safety Guidelines for the 2021, 22 School Year." You can hit that link and it'll give you information also. And any up-to-date information will always be placed there. Jorge Quintana, who is our director of Communications, updates this information on a regular basis. As soon as we get additional information, we automatically update it. So and there's a lot of times a text message that'll come out to you indicating that there's been updated information. So please always remember, this is available to you. And now on the next slide, I would like to turn the next portion of this presentation to Wendy Kelly and also to Erin Caicos. Wendy Kelly is the deputy superintendent for HR and among many other items within the district. And Erin Caicos is the director of human resources and I want to thank them so much for all their extra time and energy that they put in place to make sure that all the safety protocols are going to be evident and be available for all our parents and for all our students to comply with. So Wendy, I'll let you take it on from here.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Kyle, we'll actually move into the next slide. I do have the pleasure of working very closely with Martin Cervantes, our director of facilities and his team, of course, in general, but certainly during COVID-19 response. And so tonight in our presentation, I will be focusing on the next few slides on facility preparation for students and staff. And then Erin Caicos, our director of HR, will continue forward with a lot of information regarding preparing for students and staff to return and giving you more of the nitty-gritty, as John mentioned, regarding testing and reactions and responses to COVID situations. I do feel really prepared. We had a year of learning last year and we are building upon that knowledge. And I appreciate Dr. Baker, he's very quick in getting us any information shared, so it keeps our team running really smoothly. So Kyle, next slide, please. So our signage has changed, as you see also in businesses around the county and so forth. In encouraging our mask-wearing and hand hygiene, we have continued with our signs. Our day custodians are still in place like they were last year, offering extra cleaning support. So those of you may not know, but we actually have two day custodians on each campus, or even more sometimes actually for larger campuses, to offer extra cleaning supports in many locations, bathrooms, the play structure, which is cleaned and then classrooms, of course, workstations, and then in general as needed when things pop up throughout the day. So we're very pleased we could continue with that. We had a health waiting area. That room has just moved to another location. So I know we don't have many visitors coming to campus still, but the staffs will notice that that room has changed. And classroom furniture, the facilities crew has been very busy putting classrooms back to optimize learning for this coming year. And we appreciate the staff's patience as we're getting things back together, similar to how classrooms were set up for 1920 school year. Next slide, please. So in preparing, once again, our facilities, our custodians and maintenance staff are trained frequently, at least monthly, on any new updates and any new cleaning methods and so forth. We continue to have our PPE in stock and ready to go. A survey is going out tomorrow to staff for their orders and that email is sent out weekly. So people can order in advance and then of course we also have stock on sites with our custodian for last-minute things. Masks are definitely available. There are boxes and boxes and boxes of masks for students and staff. We would like students to bring their own mask to school, but should it be forgotten or destroyed throughout the day for whatever reason, then we have an extra supply in the office and then with a custodian. And we continue with the aggressive cleaning schedule. The electrostatic sprayer is daily for all areas on campus and our classrooms are continued to clean on an AB schedule. And so we have personnel in place to make sure that things are disinfected throughout the day. Next slide, please. So I mentioned many of the PPE that's available. Something new that has come up regarding unvaccinated employees, which we have very few of in our district, but we are able to provide KN95 for unvaccinated employees. Of course, hand sanitizer, our masks, face shields, and those classifications that have more close contact or some unique situations such as our nurses will also receive specialized PPE similar to last year. Next slide. This is, once again, a picture of our inventory. There's lots and lots of boxes. Our hand sanitizer, face shields, many items are in our warehouse, ready to go. Next slide, Kyle. And our air filtration systems, as you may recall, last year we were aggressive in ensuring we had the MRF-13, which is changed out quarterly with different documentation. You can see on the right-hand side, we have one of our HVAC experts working on that and the filter in the center. So this is a picture of what those air filtration systems look like. Next slide. And the inventory for our filters. Next slide, Kyle. We also purchased air purifiers last year and I think these will serve us for two purposes. One, to clean the air in regards to COVID and so forth and to have that circulate, but also unfortunately, living in California with wildfires, depending on the severity of the air quality, this will also assist in classroom space. So these are air purifiers you can see on the left-hand side here that are used in classrooms and offices around our district. Next slide. So we did have one parent who sent in about 10 questions or so, great questions actually, very specific about a lot of detail. But I thought, you know, for those that are interested in our audience and for our board, sometimes we don't zero in on this nitty-gritty in our board meeting. However, our director of facilities, Martin Cervantes, is really on top of these things. And so what we did is turn this into a Q&amp;A on this presentation, so it's public and others can read it in more detail. But it does break down specific information about air exchanges per hour and the HEPA air cleaners and so forth and what types of items we're using. So not sure if everybody's fully interested in this detail, but I thought it would be interesting to present. So Jorge Quintana has these items as well. Can you continue forth or Kyle, please? And then this continues, we had questions asking about carbon dioxide monitors and so forth. And then number 10 is the item regarding wildfire smoke. So as it pertains to air ventilation, we do follow the Samatay County Office of Education in regards to air quality and making a determination about next steps. So in normal times, we monitor that very carefully. However, with COVID, we have an additional layer of being concerned about not having airflow in our rooms. So we will be watching very closely with guidance for the unhealthy and very unhealthy air conditions should they come our way over the next few months. Or I hope not, but if that does indeed become the case. Next slide, please, Kyle. All right, so at this point in time, I just wanted to give you a sense of how the facilities are being prepared. But the lovely Erin Caicos is about to discuss with you the student and staff preparation as well so that we have all this information ready to go. We are presenting to all staff tomorrow at 1:45 and that will be recorded as well so that the staff can hear this up-to-date information along with other documents that are being sent out to our staff. As people are coming back, we have our teacher's first official day on Friday. Those returning to the district and our instructional assistants coming back next week. But we do have many staff here in place, so we're happy to provide this information. So I will turn this over to Erin Caicos.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm happy to be here tonight. The objective of the sections that I will go over, seek to outline the current guidance and then how Redwood City is implementing that guidance. So you will see a table that shows the guidelines and then our response or implementation policy. Next slide, please. So as you know, there are several different organizations that put forth guidelines for us to follow. We have the California Department of Public Health and the Centers for Disease Control. They update their guidance frequently. In fact, there was a major update for employees this morning from California Department of Public Health. But I have linked here the homepages for those organizations in case anyone is interested in reading the latest and greatest. I have it outlined in my slides later. We also follow the Cal OSHA emergency temporary standards for COVID-19 in regards to our employees. OSHA implemented these standards in November of 2020 and updated mid-June of 2021. So they don't update as frequently, but right now, since we just had an update in June, they are pretty current and aligned very nicely with the other guidance from the other organizations. And locally, we follow our Samatay County Office of Education's pandemic recovery framework. It was last updated August 9th and that is linked here for you as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. So jumping right into the latest guidelines, we do have some travel guidelines or recommendations from the CDC. And it is recommending that non-vaccinated individuals self-isolate after quarantine or self-isolate after traveling and take a test a certain amount of days after returning from travel. How our CSD is responding to this guidance is that we pushed out communication to our employees and families over the summer with this and we are working with those families or employees individually. School sites and student services are working to support our families through this self-isolation and human resources is working with employees who are returning and choosing or seeking self-isolation. Next slide, please. So for vaccinated employees, the current guidance from our four organizations do not require temperature checks, but Redwood City is providing optional temperature-taking devices at all sites. Teachers and office staff will have access to no touch. Teachers and staff and office staff will have access to no-touch thermometers available for use as needed. For vaccinated employees, we need, they will need to have their vaccination type, Moderna, Pfizer, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and their dates on record with Human Resources. And we're gathering that information through a self-certification survey that was sent to staff in June and early August and will go out again next week when we have, when we welcome back the rest of our staff as the school year approaches. Mask wearing for vaccinated employees is currently, according to the county mandate, which is the most restrictive mandate we have, requiring mask-wearing indoors regardless of vaccination status. We have signage at our entrances. We have extra masks available in offices. And staff are sent a weekly survey to fill out requesting PPE as needed. And lastly, we have the health screening. Health screening is required by OSHA for employees, and the way we do that is for, from a daily digital survey that is sent out to all employees in the morning, and the responses are monitored by H R. And any follow-up needed is conducted by H R. Next slide, please. For unvaccinated employees, KN ninety-five masks are available upon request. This comes from OSHA, and the way that we're addressing this and meeting this need is by having a Google order form that the staff members who are unvaccinated can use to request these KN ninety-five masks. We also have an extra supply on campus with the custodial staff. Mask-wearing at all times, which is in accordance with the county mandate, and again, we have signage at entrances and extra masks available. Employees who decline to share their vaccination status are considered unvaccinated. And these employees have been, have received and will receive direct communication from H R, alerting them to the fact that they're not disclosing their vaccination status, and that is okay. But they must follow the guidelines for unvaccinated employees or unvaccinated individuals. A health screening is also required for this group, and they use the same digital daily survey that's monitored by H R. And new today, unvaccinated employees will undergo weekly COVID testing screening. And we will be offering this. I'll go into detail about our testing plan later, but we will offer rapid tests on site. Or we have a flyer of community locations available for use. Next slide, please. Guidelines for students include temperature checks happening at home prior to the school day. We will also have temperature-checking devices or no-touch thermometers available on site as needed or if needed. But this will be communicated to our families via the Student Handbook Addendum. In this addendum, families will learn that they are asked to take their students' temperature at home prior to coming to campus in the morning. For students, mask-wearing is required indoors, but not outdoors. We'll have signage at entrances and extra masks available. This will also be in the student handbook. And all students will, will complete a health screening every morning. This will be a daily wellness survey, and this year it will be after the first ten days of school, available via the Power School Parent Portal, or it can be completed on paper and brought to campus at the beginning of the day. Next slide, please. So for, there are some individuals who are not able to wear a mask for a number of different reasons. And so when we have that happen, we do have guidance regarding that. In that case, employees will engage with the, in the interactive process with Human Resources. And students and their families will contact Student Services or Antonio Perez to set accommodations for this limitation to mask-wearing. Next slide, please. Okay, so here, I, this next section really specifically targets the guidance for symptomatic individuals and what the resulting isolation or quarantine period will be. Next slide. So when students or, or staff are sick or develop symptoms while on campus, they'll be escorted to the school's isolation room. This and on most campuses will be the school nurse's office. They'll be provided a COVID test if available. If they don't take the test, they will be provided the flyer or the resource list of community testing sites. If they do, if, if they take the test on site, it will be the rapid test, which will give results in fifteen minutes. So that is nice that we will have that test and have that answer quickly after the symptoms onset. If the test comes back positive, they'll follow quarantine guidance. And if it, the test result is negative, or they don't, the individual does not seek a test, they will have to meet the return to campus criteria. And this tracking and tracing will be handled by Student Services for students or Human Resources for employees. Next slide, please. So the return to site criteria is the same for all. There, okay. Sorry, there's a bar in the middle of the screen. So to, in order to be kind of cleared and able to come back to campus, it needs to have been twenty-four hours since there has been any sign of a fever. And that twenty-four hours has to be free of any fever-reducing medication, so naturally fever-free. We also need the other symptoms that was, that the individual is experiencing to have improved. And then we have some, some options for the last one. Either a negative COVID test or a note from the doctor attributing the symptoms to a chronic condition such as, you know, this, this individual suffers from allergies, and these are just a normal side effect of their allergies. Or a medical diagnosis, like this, this individual has tested positive for struck throat. I'm attributing these symptoms to that. Or ten days from symptom onset. So this is a really specific, this great set of return-to-work criteria or return-to-campus criteria. It's really specific and it really helps us know exactly what we need to do and how we need to respond. We'll be monitoring the daily wellness surveys for both students and employees to, to scan for symptoms and see who we need to track and trace. Tracking and tracing will be handled by Student Services for students, Human Resources for employees. And of course, we'll be supported by our site, our amazing site office teams. They are oftentimes the first point of contact for a, an employee or a student who is feeling sick, so they work with us as well. Next slide, please. So this next section talks about close contacts after an exposure, and there is a new piece of this and modified quarantine. There's a lot of information, but I'm going to go step by step and take us through it. So Kyle, if you could go to the next question, or the next slide, please. So for vax, so the, the guidance breaks out the response for a vaccinated employee or vaccinated individual and an unvaccinated individual. It further breaks out unvaccinated into staff and students. So just starting with vaccinated employees. If they have been a close contact, meaning they have been closer than six feet for fifteen cumulative minutes or more over a twenty-four-hour period, that, that is the close contact criteria, fifteen or six feet for fifteen or more minutes. If they're asymptomatic or they're having no symptoms and they feel healthy, they can continue to work on site. And they will need to take a COVID test three to five days after the date of exposure. So this test will be a rapid test on site or they're welcome to access community testing locations or their healthcare provider. For employees, H R will be tracking and tracing this and following up. If that vaccinated employee who was a close contact develops symptoms, they'll need to isolate at home. And since they're at home, they're going to have to seek a clinical evaluation or a clinical test. They won't come back to the campus to take a test, because if they're not feeling well, they'll stay off campus and seek a test through their healthcare provider or at the community locations. If they test positive, they'll have to isolate for ten days and then meet the return-to-work criteria of having no fever for twenty-four hours and symptom improvement. If they are a close contact and symptomatic and they return a negative test, they'll have to isolate until they have a diagnosis from their healthcare provider or they meet the return-to-work criteria that we just went over. H R will handle the tracking and tracing, but per OSHA, employees will be paid one hour on a timesheet to seek a medical test or allowed to go during their workday. Positive, so because they won't be at work, they'll be isolating at home. H R will coordinate the timesheet that allows for this to happen. And of course, we work in conjunction with the County Health Department, and we report positive results to our county. H R handles that for employees. Next slide, please. For unvaccinated employees, the response is different. If an unvaccinated employee has been in close contact with a positive case and they are asymptomatic, they must quarantine for ten days if they do not take a test. The quarantine can be shortened to seven days if they take a test five days after the exposure and that result is negative. There, there is an allowance for that shortened quarantine because the test has been taken that on the fifth day and has returned a negative result. Again, it'll be an hour on a timesheet per OSHA. And tracking and tracing and coordination of substitutes will happen by Human Resources. If an unvaccinated employee was at close contact and they developed symptoms, they'll isolate at home and they'll seek a clinical test or a clinical evaluation from their healthcare provider or community testing site. If they test positive, they'll follow the normal isolation guidance, which is isolating for ten days, having symptom improvement and fever-free for twenty-four hours. If an unvaccinated employee is a close contact, develops symptoms and returns a negative result, they will do the full fourteen-day quarantine because of that close contact. They cannot test out of quarantine. Again, H R will handle the tracking and tracing and timesheet and will work with the county to report any positive results. Next slide, please. For our vaccinated students, our students who are twelve and older and who have been vaccinated, the, the guidance is very similar to vaccinated employees. If they have been a close contact and they are asymptomatic, they're continuing to attend in person. And they can take a test three to five days following the exposure. We'll offer rapid testing on site or we have the community testing locations. And tracking and tracing will happen by Student Services. For symptomatic close contacts who are vaccinated, they'll isolate at home. They'll seek a test, and then the guidance is the same for the test result. So a positive test result is a ten-day isolation and the return-to-campus criteria. A negative test result is a diagnosis from a healthcare provider or the, the return-to-work criteria or return-to-campus criteria. We have the community testing locations. Tracking and tracing will happen by Student Services. And Student Services will work with County Health Department to report positive cases. The county then reaches out to the families or the employee to follow up with quarantine guidelines and exposure letters if needed. Next slide, please. For unvaccinated students, and this is where there has been a change, a modified quarantine. So if an unvaccinated student has been a close contact and is asymptomatic, there's two different paths. If both parties were masked, that close contact can continue in-person learning if they're asymptomatic. But they must undergo testing twice a week for ten days. And that testing would be a rapid antigen test on site or a community testing or a healthcare provider testing if that's what the family decides. Tracking and tracing of that will happen by Student Services. If both parties were not masked and we have a, a positive case and an unvaccinated student who were close contacts and masks were not used the entire time, the quarantine would be for ten days if there's no follow-up testing or seven days if a negative test is returned after the fifth day from exposure. And Student Services will be tracking and tracing for that. If an unvaccinated student was a close contact and they develop symptoms, they'll isolate at home and seek a test. And then they have the same return-to-work criteria or return-to-campus criteria. They need, if they have a positive test result, they'll follow the normal isolation guidelines. And if they have a negative test result, they'll find, they'll follow the typical fourteen-day quarantine guidelines that cannot be tested out for this. We have the community testing flyer. We have Student Services ready to track and trace. And we have, we are in connection with the County Health Department to offer supports for the positive cases and positive case reporting. Next slide, please. So our testing program, this has been really exciting, and this is a really, this is really unique to Redwood City School District, so I'm really excited to share. Next slide, please. So we have developed kind of like a four-tier approach to COVID testing for our staff and students. We have testing set up to happen before the first day of school. So all Redwood City School District staff and students are invited to participate in testing on Monday, August sixteenth from nine to eleven at Taft, Hoover and Henry Ford. And or, and or Tuesday, August seventeenth from nine to eleven and one to three P M. at Taft, Hoover and Henry Ford. Parents and employees will need to use the registration link to register with primary health before attending the testing event. But it is open to all students and all staff for Redwood City School District, and the links will be pushed out shortly. We also have our responsive COVID testing if symptoms were to arise during the school day. We will provide reactive rapid antigen testing. And we have site leads that are being trained at each site to handle this testing. They'll also be supported by our district nursing staff. On top of that, we have proactive rapid antigen screening set up for employees and students to take place every Monday afternoon from three to five and every Thursday afternoon from one forty-five to three thirty. There will be two sites each Monday and each Thursday. It'll be, they'll be held at Kennedy and Hoover. And these testing sites will be staffed by our nurses with support from the Boys and Girls Club of the Peninsula. And these are open to both employees and students of the Redwood City School District. I've linked the flyer below in case anyone wants the details later on. And then the fourth option is the community testing locations that are available in San Mateo County, and we have the county flyer linked there as well. Next slide, please. This next slide goes into the details about our testing plan. So Redwood City School District has partnered with California Department of Public Health to provide this testing program for our students and employees. It's a no-cost testing program, so Department of Public Health is covering all of the costs. They're providing the rapid antigen testing that offers results in fifteen minutes with confirmatory PCR testing. So if a rapid antigen test comes back positive, that individual will have the option of taking a PCR test to confirm, or they can go to their healthcare provider or a community testing site to take that confirmatory PCR. We'll be using the primary platform, which is the same platform we used during the pilot at Henry Ford and Taft last year. And I learned today that when you register, when an individual registers on the primary platform, there is no, there is no information required about medical insurance. So I think that is a great, I think that's great for our employees and our families to know that they don't need to share that information because C D P H is picking up the cost of our testing. The other thing that California Department of Public Health is providing is personnel. So we recently found out that there is, their C D P H is providing districts. They're using an equity, an equity formula to determine personnel staffing that is granted to districts. And we've been approved for seven full-time employees provided from an outside vendor to come to our district and administer the tests and oversee our testing program. So they'll handle the details of managing supply and managing setup and having the personnel on site to administer and read the tests. And we will work with them for scheduling and expectations and that kind of detail. So we're really excited for that partnership because seven employees ready to handle testing for us really will strengthen our testing program. We're anticipating to start with the vendor on October first. We are in the, all the districts are in the very early stages of setting this up. And we are working diligently to make sure that we get this in place as soon as possible. Next slide, please. And just, just a reminder, it's just like last year, COVID oversight for the district for students is handled COVID oversight for the district for students is handled by Antonio Perez, the Director of Student Services. And for employees that it is handled by myself, Erin Jacobs. That is. The last slide, I believe, for me. Can you go to the next slide, Kyle, and I can just confirm? Yes.
Thank you, Erin, so much. I know this was a lot of time spent on this information and even up-to-date information. Because Erin went to a meeting today. And we quickly filled out a survey so that we could make sure that we would get those additional. Support personnel from an outside entity. So I'm glad it's all in place. It's really going to strengthen our testing program. Along with allowing us to really serve our families as needed. So at this point in time, before we go on to the next presentation, are there any questions from board members? I know this was a lot of information. It has changed several times over the last few weeks. And this is the last up-to-date information we have as of today at about, I want to say, three forty-five, four o'clock.
So Dr. Baker.
Go ahead, Cecilia.
So I, I do want to thank Erin for the very thorough explanation of everything. And I guess my question would be, how are students going to schedule? Are they going to schedule or they're going to be on a walk-in basis if they want to do the antigen testing?
So for right now, the offering for that will be Mondays and Thursday afternoons at Kennedy and Hoover. On site, it'll be offered on a need, as needed basis if symptomatic students or staff members. If students or staff members develop symptoms on site during the day. But if students want to or staff want to participate in regular screening testing. Until we get the vendor in place, that offering is Monday and Thursday afternoon at Kennedy and Hoover.
So there's a lot of questions in the chat. Did you want to? I, I know a few of them that are quick. Some of us have been responding to, but I don't know how you want to handle those. If you want to just. Add those to the frequently asked questions and we'll put those out in the next couple of days, or if you want to try to go through some of them tonight.
It would probably be best because we have a lot of information tonight, plus we have the whole policy on independent study to go through. So if we could take time to put these in FAQs and get, and we'll try our best to get them out by the end of workday on Friday. And, and so we'll, we have the questions, you know, and we will work on them starting, you know, tomorrow and complete them at the end of workday on Friday. Especially when it comes to the pieces with the testing, pieces with the dashboard and all of that, we need to get together, go through. Our responses and that we're all on the same page when it comes to answering these questions. So that would be my preference, Lisa.
Okay, and I would just say, I think a few of the question, that, that sounds, that sounds good to me because I do know we have a very full agenda. And some of them are specific questions people have and then some might be more general. I, just to confirm, at least for those on the call tonight. The, I think it was August sixteenth and seventeenth, there are, there is taste, testing available for students and for staff. So maybe that, I don't know if that information has gone out already. If not, maybe that could go out sooner just so people could get that on their calendars. And then we could get, I think there's other details that they don't necessarily need to know today.
Correct.
But they would like to, you know what I mean? So maybe we could sort through those questions if there's any that are more immediate, we could get back sooner.
We are going to put out another communique on Friday.
Okay.
Jorge will be working on that. So again, he'll have that information, there'll be a link.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. All right, any other questions or comments from the board at this point?
But just to make sure, but you said there's more presentation, do you mean on the reopening agenda items?
On the reopening, yes, yes. Before we get to, before we get to the policy on independent study, yeah.
Great, um, okay. All right, so why don't you carry on?
So the next portion of our meeting will work with independent study. You do recall that at our last board meeting, I said there was a trailer bill that still hadn't been passed. And I was a bit concerned about it because it talked about independent study and it also talked about retention. And so on July ninth, I believe it's when the legislature passed. Legislation regarding independent study and retention. And then on July twelfth, we actually received. What the got, well, they see, they, they termed it as guidelines, but to be perfectly honest with you from the state, they were not guidelines. And all twenty-three districts, we were all. Kind of panicking of what it would look like for each of us, working with our attorneys, working with the county superintendent, working with consultants. So tonight, Liz Wolf, our Assistant Superintendent for Ed Services, has worked very closely. With other colleagues, also with other districts, consultants, to put together what our independent study will look like. When you look at independent study at, in each of the twenty-three districts in the county, they all look different. Very different. So we believe that the one that is going to be presented tonight serves the Redwood City community. In, in a manner that is very different from how other districts are handling it. We did receive information, you know, you could go outside with it, you could go with an outside vendor. That could provide independent study and there was a lot of legal concerns about that. But some of the districts are going in that direction anyway. So we have chosen not to do that. We have chosen to have our own in-house independent study. And you will review the policy when Ms. Wolf finishes. In regard of what that will look like. Independent study is different for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Real different than what it has been in the past. All right, so with that, Liz, I'm going to let you start because I know it's a lot of information.
Thanks, John. Kyle, do you want me to share my screen or do you want to share the, the slides?
You can go ahead and share, Liz.
Oh, okay, I'm. Either way is fine. Okay, can everybody see these?
Yes.
Thanks. So I want to start off by saying I really appreciate the tremendous amount of information that Erin just shared. Also knowing that things are changing every day and new guidelines are coming out every day. And so keeping up with that. Is kind of crazy-making and the same thing is happening with independent study. As Dr. Baker said a couple of minutes ago, the law did pass a month ago, so it seems like we've had all this time to prepare. Yet the, it passed without guidelines. And so we're still getting guidelines and changes from the state daily. For example, the example that John just gave about, we thought it was okay to use an outside vendor and now they're saying it's not. And that just came out a couple of days ago and so people are scrambling around. So this is the information that we have right now and the best plans that we have made right now. Knowing that there's still some things that have not been finished and that we need to continue to work on because we've been waiting for the guidelines. All that being said. So I'm going to give you a little bit of the background of the AB one thirty, which is the law that has to do with retention. And then we'll have some discussion and then we'll talk about AB one oh four, which has to do with retention. I think I said that backwards. So one thirty about independent study. So in terms of independent study. As Dr. Baker just mentioned, there is a requirement now that we, we look at how we define independent study. And to whom it is offered. We are able to offer our own program, which is the decision that we made. Initially, there was going to possibly be an option of contracting with the County Office of Education if they were to offer a program. And right now, the only program they are offering is an extension of their gateway program, which is for the students who needed an alternative placement. In the high schools. Or we could enter into an intra-district agreement with another school district and we're not planning on, on doing that. In addition to relooking at our independent study program. There are some requirements by grade level in terms of how that, what, at least the, the minimum requirements need to be. Independent study in, in the past has often been assigning students work and then collecting it in a couple of weeks. And checking it off to see if they have done that. That's not allowed during this, under the new AB one thirty requirements. There needs to be synchronous instruction and we'll talk about what, how the legislature defines synchronous instruction in a second. For TK through three every day and for grades four through eight, there needs to be daily live interactions along with weekly synchronous instruction. Synchronous instruction as defined by AB one thirty means classroom-style instruction. Or small group instruction or one-to-one instruction that is delivered either in person. Or on the phone or the internet with two-way communication between the teachers and the students. It's not just one way listening to lectures, that it's two-way interaction, either a whole class, small group or one-to-one. Live interaction is interaction between the students and the educational staff for maintaining school connectedness. Wellness checks, progress monitoring. So that in addition to the instruction, there's also the outreach to ensure that the students are. Doing well, that they're feeling connected to the school, that the, the educators are monitoring the progress of the students. And so this can also be in person, on the phone or through the internet. And this new law also has added to the previous reasons for independent study, which included travel. Or if a particular course was not offered or if students were doing community service and needed to have something special arranged for them. This new rationale is that independent study needs to be offered and available for students. Whose parents or guardians have determined that their health would be put at risk by returning to school, by in-person instruction. And so that is in response, of course, to the pandemic. So as part of the structure of this educational option. The LEA, the local education agency, which is the Redwood City School District. Needed, needs to notify parents and guardians of this option to enroll either in in-person. Instruction or independent study, which I've just called IS from, from this point on. And so we did that. We sent out a survey at the end of last year in terms of returning to school and we sent it out again a couple of weeks ago. And we will still continue to collect this information and I'll talk about that in just a few minutes. There is information on our website about this, which again is not robust at this point because we are still designing the program. But that there is information and we will also be talking about some upcoming parent meetings that we'll be having on Friday and next week. That will give more detailed information because we will have met with the teachers on Friday. So the parents have the right to apply for their children for independent study. And to request a parent pupil and educator conference. That conference can be done in person, it can be done virtually, and we'll be talking about that in just a minute as well. In addition, AB thirty has said that we need, as a district, need to ensure that there are tiered re-engagement strategies. That include the parents. Again, this is independent study, which looks, will look different than distance learning from last year. In that there will be an expectation that the parents are more involved in this year's independent study. And so these tiered re-engagement strategies need to include information to parents. If students are not showing up for school or if they're not participating in their assignments. And establishing a standard for when there needs to be a follow-up conference with the, with the child, with the parent and with the teacher. Or the person of record on the district level to reconsider if an independent study placement is actually in the pupil's best interest. And for their, for their wellbeing and for their student achievement. And it's possible that the decision we made that an independent study program is not working for that particular child. It is the responsibility of the LEA of us, the Rose City School District, to ensure that there are tech resources available. To each student who is enrolled in independent study, whether that be a device or a hotspot. They need to have the materials to be able to complete their assigned work. The written agreement that will be signed by the student, the parent and the, the LEA, the Rose City School District. Will also give information about what kind of supports that student may need. And we'll be talking about special education specifically in just a minute. But if the student needs outreach for mental health or if they're not performing at grade level, there will need to be some information that is shared. And some plans made to support the children in those ways. And if the parent decides that the, the in, independent study program is not working well for their child. Then they, and they want to request that a student be returned to in-person instruction. Then we need to have a plan to return that student to the classroom within five instructional days. So spaces at the school site where the students are enrolled will need to be kept throughout the year. So that if a student does return to in-person instruction, whether through parent request or through the fact that the independent study program is not. Proving to be successful for that student, that they have a place being held for them in their classroom. The content of the instructional, of the independent program, independent study program. Needs to be substantially equivalent in intellectual challenge to the in-person instruction, right? So it's not just something easy. Some of the, the. The agencies that were offering their own program that we looked into a couple of weeks ago. We didn't feel that they were as rigorous as we would like them to be in terms of meeting the, the kind of work. That our students will be expected to do. And particularly, we know that our students who are in independent study need to be equally prepared. To return to the in-person instruction at any time. And so that the substantially equivalent work that they're doing. Needs to be preparing them to be able to make that kind of transition. So as part of the tiered re-engagement, if a student is not attending. And attending means that the, the teachers of record are keeping track of the student's presence in their synchronous. Time, but also their turning in work during the asynchronous or independent time. If they're not generating attendance for more than three school days in a week. Or if they are in violation of the written agreement that talks about the amount of work and their. Their assignments and when those assignments are due. Then there is outreach to that student and their family to ensure some tiered re-engagement strategies. But these strategies need to determine not only if the student needs additional help with potentially health or social services. Or once again, if this is not the best placement for the child. So I just said this, that there needs to be prior to the, this beginning, when the, when the contracts are signed. That there needs to be an understanding of what a satisfactory level of educational progress would be for that child. In, in the determination about whether that child should return to in-person instruction. So again, we'll talk about students with IEPs in just a minute. But generally, independent study will begin on the first day of school. If, if a parent has signed up their student for independent study. We will not have time to have each family sign the independent study contract. And we have thirty days from the start of school to have that happen. So those contracts will be signed by September seventeenth. And those are the contracts that once again will delineate. Information about that tiered re-engagement and the expectation for attendance and for the completion of assignments. So to say a little bit more about what we're planning, we are planning to have one teacher at each grade level. The TK through K will be a combination class because we only have one TK student at this time who has shown an interest in. And in class, and independent study program. And the teachers are being interviewed. At this point now, we have all but one teacher who has been hired. They went through a fairly rigorous. Examination in terms of our interview process. They answered a series of questions, but we also asked them to provide. A proposed schedule and to do a model lesson for us so that we could see what their experience was with. and to do a model lesson for us so that we could see what their experience was with um uh virtual teaching. And these are teachers who have had experience with distance learning and virtual teaching, and they are interested in staying in remote teaching, and so not any of them live close by. Um they live uh in California and um around in close states. But their their plan is to continue to teach remotely, and they, as I said, they have had experience in doing this. For those who we were able to hire last Friday, they uh attended our Redwood City Professional Development that took place Monday through today so that they are becoming comfortable with um our curriculum and our initiatives and our areas of focus for this year. And we are meeting all together as a group on Friday to design our schedules. The weekly program that that these teachers will provide will be daily synchronous instruction at each grade level. And this is what they showed us when they proposed their um their daily schedule, their weekly schedule to us during the interview process. And there will be time for large group instruction, synchronous instruction. They will be breaking their students into small group instruction as well. But in addition, this is independent study, so there will be daily independent assignments at each grade level. There are schedules that that again are being finalized, will be finalized on Friday, that meet or exceed the minimum number of minutes that are required by the law, which are similar to what we had last year. But again, there will be components of these days that the parents are going to need to support their children, not only in being connected and making sure that they're following the synchronous um and asynchronous schedules that the teachers will be um uh sharing uh either at the end of day Friday or by Monday, but in in completing that independent work and turning that in on time. And so again, these were the the minimum amount of minutes, but most of the schedules will exceed this number of minutes. And they will be sent out to the families who enroll on Monday. Because again, we are just continuing, we just are finishing hiring the teachers, and we'll be bringing them together on Friday to develop these schedules. We have been collecting names, and this chart was done yesterday, and I believe the numbers have changed a bit since then. But these are the at each school, these were the numbers of requests. And what we understand is that not all of these people will be signing up for independent study. And we're actually really very much hoping that after the presentation on the safety measures being taken at the school sites, that many people will realize what a safe place it is to um return their children to school. And we highly encourage that because we still believe that is the strongest program, is to have the children back in school in person. But with our independent study option, um right now, these are the people who are interested at least in hearing more about it. And there are students at each of these school sites who do have IEPs. And so I I also want to say, if we want to talk a little bit more about this, Patricia Polino is in the audience, and we can unmute her, and she could say something more if you want to talk about this during the discussion time. But what we know about students with IEPs is that in order for a student with an IEP to participate in independent study, it has to be written in their IEP that they can participate in an independent study program. And we've attended several meetings with the county office, and I know that um Patricia spent most of the day today with our county council. And there are significant concerns about students with IEPs not necessarily meeting the FAP, the Free and Appropriate Public Education, where they have access to to their um their peers. So we can talk, and yet, we also know that there are parents with of students with IEPs who have significant concerns about their health. So we understand that. So um in order for a student with an IEP to actually enroll in to the independent study program, there needs to be an IEP meeting. And again, we have to see here if anybody um needs to hear a little bit more about that. But we will be having a parent meeting for students, for parents of students with IEPs on Monday. And the link is here, and it's it has been sent out as well by Jorge to the people who have expressed an interest. And we will have more conversation about this on Monday night at five o'clock. For um other parents, um we have two meetings planned for Friday, where again, by that time, we're hoping that the schedules will be able to be shared because the teachers will be working on them during that day. And we also hope to have a draft of the contract that will be signed between August eighteenth and September seventeenth that will delineate what are the expectations for each child in order to be successful in independent study. But we will have a meeting for the English-speaking parents on Friday night at six o'clock, and for the Spanish-speaking parents on Friday night at seven o'clock. All of these contracts that I just mentioned will be signed by the parent, the student, and our our district designee, who will be Al Roselle, who is out of the country right now, but he will be back on September eighteenth and will be taking over the independent study program and working with each of the parents uh in the families and the teachers to to work on these contracts and have them signed by September seventeenth. And I've also linked in here an example from the Santa Cruz County Office of Education, which has been used, in fact, by the um State Department as an example, and so ours will probably look pretty similar to this one. So for the parents who may be in the audience tonight, who are or in the future, who are interested in applying for independent study, if their name was has not been already received by us in the different polls that have been sent out, we are asking them to email John Baker and Wendy Kelly, and so that their names get on um a list, and then we will contact them with more information. We are starting to also collect information for an FAQ, and so again, questions that aren't answered tonight, we can continue to work on them and add them um to this FAQ and have it be provided on Friday as well as um answer additional questions on Friday night at the meetings. But a commonly asked question is, will my child receive grade-level content-based instruction from certified teachers? And the answer is yes. And in our case, these certified teachers are our employees using our curriculum. Will my child be guaranteed a place at their home school when they return to in-person instruction? And the answer to that is yes. Will my child be allowed to join an independent study classroom at any time during the school year? And the answer to that is yes. We're really reluctant um to have a student go back and forth, move back and forth between in-person and independent study and back again. But it is your right as a parent to make that kind of request. We would have meetings with you to talk about you know, uh understanding what the expectations are if you're moving from an independent study from an in-person into independent study, or like I said, joining an independent study classroom at the beginning of the year. So it's very clear what the expectations and the criteria for success are in an independent study classroom that we offer. And so I said, I already just answered this question, so yes, you can move back and forth. And sometimes the independent study option may be offered as um a temporary placement as in traditional independent study where there may be illness or travel and going out of the country for a while. In the past, people have asked for an independent study program, and that's been handled by the classroom teacher. From now on, that's going to be handled by the independent study teachers in the independent study program. And that we're asking that it be for at least a minimum of five days to make it a viable program. In terms of student supports, as I mentioned earlier, there will be small group supports. Students with IEPs again must meet with the special ed team to determine if independent study is appropriate based on these children's needs. Um and again, the temporary is it uh at a temporary placement. So the question has come up that can we still offer the traditional option where the parents are um just asking for work for the student to do um and not enroll them in an independent study program? And we're seeing that as more of a homeschooling um issue and not really. Our our independent study program is meant to meet the requirements under the law of AB one thirty, that it be um a robust program with a minimum number of minutes that is taught by a teacher in our district. In in our case, by our our independent study teachers. So that is our plan at this time. And so now, and there there's a guide here that's linked to this as well from Successo, which is the um the group that uh works with um superintendents across the state of California. So there's a lot more detail and links in there as well. So I have more slides about retention, but I didn't know if you wanted to talk a little bit, have some discussion about independent study first before we talk about retention.
So does the board have any questions about independent study? I know we have at least uh, I think we have one comment card on that that we could take. And there's a few questions.
I just have one clarifying question. Um so if if a student um has to go into quarantine for ten days, do they get moved to that independent study program then? Is that, that's what it sounds like?
So I think that's what we're thinking. So that they really don't lose out on ten days of instruction and don't just get an assignment for ten days, that they really have someone who's overseeing. They probably, I don't know, we have to talk about this to see if they would need to fill out a contract. Probably not, right? Because the contract is more for a year-long program. But we would want to have an a a conversation with the student and their parents and the and the teachers about what the expectation was for a student to um to um be successful. If a student is sick, I don't think we would have that same expectation. But if a student is quarantined because of close contact, then that would probably be something that we would look at as a a a temporary independent study placement.
Thank you.
I'll ask, so thanks for putting this together, Liz. On the um, so it's one teacher for the grade level for the whole district, that's the plan. And then for the minutes, um just to make sure I heard that right, that's the total number of instruction combined with independent work, synchronous work, and whatever other interaction um on that slide?
Yes, that's correct, and that's why it will be more than that. Um yeah, it will definitely be more than that.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Thanks for putting these slides together. And the FAQ also, I should mention that I did send some questions, but they were answered in the FAQ by the time the presentation came out, so thanks for anticipating that.
Thank you. So I I'd like to say too, I think when we think about what's happening in some of the other districts and some of the things that you're going to hear, we we are doing more than many other districts, and we think it's important because we want our children to to thrive, we really want our children to return to in-person instruction. We we also want them to thrive in an independent study program as well. Because we don't want our students to miss out on another year of instruction where they're only getting the minimum of somebody calling them once once a day, right? And so we're we're wanting to provide more than that, but we also recognize that it's not meant to be exactly what happened last year. It really is meant to be an emphasis on that support in independent study, but that it's um planned by the teacher in collaboration and and work with the families.
All right, um why don't we go ahead and take the comment or the question from the um comment card?
Okay, that, so Mary Bell Eng has been there.
I think it's Catherine Stewart on independent study. First, please.
Okay.
All right, Catherine, welcome. You'll have three minutes, please.
Thank you. Hi. Um, yes, I, my kid will be doing independent study until we have the children's COVID vaccine. And um he's, he was in Mandarin immersion, he's going into North Star for third grade. And we'd like to have access to um all the online apps and and programs such as uh Brain Pop, Better Immersion, Level Chinese, all that kind of stuff, if that's possible. And to continue to be able to use those things. And also, um any kind of apps or anything that the kids would normally use at North Star, we were new there, so we don't know what that would be. But we'd like to have access to the textbooks, the workbooks, curriculum assignments, to schedule all the things that the kids who are in the classroom would have, so that when we, hopefully the vaccine will come out soon, so that when that happens and we want to go back in person on campus, we'll be able to just jump right in. So whether somebody's going to Mandarin immersion, or whether they're going to North Star, or wherever they're going, um that they'll get stuff that matches what their peers will be doing in the classroom. And so they'll be able to keep up, and they won't fall behind on that kind of stuff. Also, is it just by coincidence, um a lot of the kids who are from Mandarin immersion that are going to North Star have still kept up with their Mandarin and would love to be able to have access to stuff like Level Chinese and and Better Immersion and and all that kind of thing. So that would be really nice, and Quizlets and stuff. So if we could have access to that, that'd be great. And also, Brain Pop is a really nice program, so we'd love to have access to those kinds of things if that's at all possible. And so that was my main um thought, is we 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 are hoping that this is just going to be a short thing, and that any minute now, somebody will come up with a vaccine and will be able to take it. Both my husband and I have taken all our vaccines, and as soon as our kids are a able to do that, we'll definitely be doing it. So we, that's what we're, that's what we're requesting, is can we have access to as much stuff as possible so we can um keep up with what's going on in the classroom and be able to just jump right in when when it's possible to do that? Okay, that was it. And also, thank you very much for the nice pictures about all the new building and construction stuff. That was really cool. Anyway, thank you. That was all.
All right, thank you, Catherine. Um, yeah, so I know that that was a question that I had for Dr. Baker just around, you know, earlier in the in the year, and it appears the program that we're offering will be English-only, only. It'll be by grade level. And so I think there is a question on, you know, some people have it in the chat, and Catherine just expressed it specifically around our specialty programs, like the immersion programs or North Star. I don't know what more you want to say about how that would work.
So Elisa, um I know Liz probably, Liz probably doesn't have tonight, but we are going to have a resource guide like for the Spanish speakers, the different types of resources that are available for them, for the Mandarin immersion, there's different types of resources that are available for them. We have, and then we're continuing to work on that. But as you are correct, you are correct, when we spoke last school year and we were talking about independent study, that it is a English-only program and not a specialty program that some of our sites do have.
Can I add to that too? Um under the the law, um this is seen as a school of choice. The independent study is a school of choice. And so parents who are putting their children in the independent study program are choosing that particular program. And so we got some guidance from our county council that says you don't need to offer more than one merging of school of choice, right? So the school of choice program for the independent study program is an English-only grade level following the the district curriculum, but that is the choice.
We're okay with that.
Yeah, so I think um, yeah, thank you for that response. And I think for those people in the audience, and Catherine in specific, you know, I know we had this conversation lashed here at a number of board meetings and leading up to this, and and um, you know, part of it is a resource issue and a capacity issue with the teachers in the classroom and all of that. So we actually feel really good about what we're able to offer. I think it will be a very rigorous program, following some engaging curriculum, you know. And actually, we're offering much more than many of our surrounding districts will be offering. But I think that's a good way to think of it. It is a school of choice at this point, and so that's the offering that we have. And so one of the things that um, you know, Dr. Baker just mentioned is there will be some additional resource guides for the immersion programs in particular. So uh people who are interested in keep help helping their child stay up on Spanish or Mandarin, that will be an optional sort of thing, is my understanding, but there'll be some resources available for that. So, um, okay, uh, good. Well, uh, thank you for that. And then I think what we still have, retention, right?
There's a piece about retention. As you know, the trailer bill also had um legislature that went, legislation that went forward with the legislature regarding retention. So um we have been working with this new law, AB one oh four. And um tonight, uh Liz will give a little bit of overview on this. We, some of the principals and even myself have started some of these meetings with parents in regard to retention that we have to have. It does not have to take place prior to the beginning of the school year, but we do understand that there are some parents that are interested in doing this prior to school starting. So um Liz will give some information on this, and I believe there's also information in regard to IEPs too. And then we have Patricia Polino, Dr. Polino, who's with us, who's the director of special education, who IEPs too. And then we have Patricia Palino, Dr. Palino, who's with us, who's the Director of Special Education, who could also answer some questions or give an overview.
Yeah, so I just want, thank you. I just want to start off by saying we really don't recommend retaining students, right? And so while it's now in the law that there are more possibilities to request, request retention for your child, that all the research shows that it's not a good idea. And so that this link here just shows some of the resources that point that out. And we also want to make sure that parents know that there are a lot of supports that are going to be put into place at the beginning of the school year because we know that students are going to be re-entering this year at all different places. And so we're prepared for that. We're looking forward to that. We're thinking about how we can accelerate students. We're looking at how we can identify what students need. We're going to start the year with community building to get to know the students and hear the stories and do some, you know, informal assessments to find out what students had success with over these past few months and what they're, they're still needing to learn. And so those, we'll be doing some more formalized assessments in September, but those first weeks of school, as they get to know the students and get to know their, their, their classroom community, they can be thinking about what kind of instructional groupings they can put the students in. We're going to have additional supports for tutoring. We've got health and wellness counselors in terms of working with teachers and with students to really help address some of the particular areas that students may, may be exhibiting that they, they have some additional needs in. There's coaching that's available for teachers. We are partnering with a number of institutions of learning that are going to support us as well in our small group reading focus, our English learners, so, social emotional supports. So we really want parents to realize that while they feel that their, their student may be struggling and that it might be in their best interest to repeat the year, that we, we don't recommend that and that we have people prepared and additional resources at each school site to help meet the needs of your child. Now, given that, you have the right, parents have the right to request retention for their children. And we've actually got quite a large number of parents who are at least expressing interest in having the conversation about that. And so as Dr. Baker said, this doesn't have to happen before school starts and it's very likely not going to happen because of just the sheer amount of meetings and maze days and things that are happening before school starts, that it will most likely occur within 30 days of the, the beginning of school. And so you will have a meeting if you request a meeting with the, with the principal. You'll have a meeting with the school principal and very likely last year's classroom teacher, possibly this year's classroom teacher, to talk about what is in the best interest of your child. And then within 10 days, you will be notified about the decision. Although you can request, it's your right to request retention. The principal can make the recommendation not to retain. Okay. And then, but then if that happens, then there will need to be a conversation about what, what will happen to, to best serve the needs of your child. There are also some possibilities of changing grades. And for most of our, our students, this doesn't really pertain because we didn't really give grades until, except for the middle school. But some of the law is, the law certainly is written for K through 12. And most of this really pertains to, to students who are in high school, but the, if your student received a lot of Ds or Fs, that might be a reason that you're thinking that the student should be retained, but there's also the possibility of having a conversation about having these grades changed to a pass or no pass. So in these consultations that you'll have with your school site, you will be looking at academic data and again, what's in the best interests of the academics as well as the social interest of your student. And then will the, I know that the principals will be talking to you about the effectiveness of retention and what kind of supports would be available. And if the student has an IEP, once again, the special ed department would like to be part of that conversation. The special ed department does not make a decision about whether a child is going to be retained or not. But the IEP needs to be considered and the supports need to be considered in this conversation as well. So if a student is retained, then that student still is entitled completely to interventions and supports. And students who are not retained are also going to be offered specific interventions and supports to help accelerate their learning. And again, those are something that I mentioned earlier that we're working with our teachers and working with our coaches and working with some of our, our local institutes of higher learning to do some training for us to help really look to see what are the most effective ways to accelerate student learning. So again, the process for this is collecting names and we have names. If you are interested and we haven't given us your names, please send those into John Baker and Wendy Kelly as well. We're sharing those with site administrators and then the site administrators are holding meetings and then making the decisions. And as I just mentioned, if your child has an IEP, then the special education department will be contacting you and working with you as well to be part of these meetings to help make the best decision for your child. And that's it on retentions. Any questions?
Any questions on retentions? All right. Thank you, Liz, very much for all that information. Thanks for all the work you're doing. I know it's a lot. We did have one comment or question from Mary Bell Eng. If you can go ahead and bring her over, Kyle. I think it was on physical distancing. So it was actually on the earlier part of our presentation, but why don't we take the question? So I don't, yeah, Erin's still, maybe Erin, Wendy or John can answer it.
Hello?
Oh, hi, welcome.
Hi. Um, so my question and comment related to physical distancing, is that relevant right now?
Yeah, because I think we already sort of covered it, right?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, but go ahead and make your comment.
Okay, yeah. Um, so I, my main question had to do in, in light of the very, you know, high transmission, you know, rate of the Delta variant. I was concerned that without physical distancing within the classroom, despite the masking, that we weren't sort of, kind of doing as much prevention as we could. And I know there are a lot of constraints physically, spatially within our schools. So my question had to do with just kind of in light of CDC studies and on the website, they talk about kind of globally, the, the, all the benefits and all the prevention of transmission that occurred with past variants with distancing within the classroom and how that really helped. And they, you know, there are documented studies on this. I was just wondering, is that something that the, the school district and individual schools have been able to look at more closely to see if, if not even three feet, but just something to, to really like maximize the prevention that, that social distancing can accomplish within the the classroom, within indoor environments in our schools?
All right. Thank you for the question. I don't know if that's Erin, Wendy or Dr. Baker.
Right. So we talked about this at great length this afternoon, just this afternoon. Because as you look at CDC and you also look at the Department of Health, everything that you read and that's noted says that the best thing for children is to be in school. That's the best. Masked and to also be masked. Yes, there could be another layer of safety. But the best layer that one could have as far as safety is concerned with COVID is that everyone be masked. Now, I know we have been talking with principals in regard to when it comes to lunchtime and getting kids to eat outside as often as possible. And we're going to, at a distance and then taking off their mask. If that is not possible some days, then you're in the multi-use room, which is our lunchroom. And the students will be socially distanced. We're going to do it the best we can at that point. But everything that we read and we were talking about this afternoon, it did say the best, safest barrier for COVID in the classroom is for every student and adult to be masked. And I don't know, Erin or Wendy, if you wanted to chime in on the conversation we had. Because we were looking up at the information right before, you know, we ended the day.
Yeah, it's in the CDPH FAQs about the reopening schools guidance. And it does, it, like Dr. Baker said, the research from CDPH says the best mitigation factor is masking. And that's why the physical distancing has been removed from the guidance.
And I just wanted to add, and somebody just put in the chat too, the air ventilation, which is why I spent a little bit more time on that, this board meeting. That's also a major factor. So masks definitely number one, but air ventilation through the air purifiers and the MR13 filters and systems that we have are the best way to go from what we're reading.
And the CDPH research says, so we know COVID-19 is an airborne, it's transmitted through droplets and particles that are airborne. The physical distancing protects you from the droplets that travel across a greater distance. But the masking really stops any particles. So the masking with the air ventilation is really a great barrier. And the physical distancing has not been shown to be as effective as those two together.
All right, great. I think that that was helpful in terms of the response. So thank you. Did you want to say something else, Dr. Baker?
I just wanted to say that it's a little after nine o'clock. What would you like to do moving forward?
Yeah, so I, I just, I want to make sure we're going to take a break in just a minute. But board members, did you have any other question? Because we're wrapping up this section, I think, right? Okay, so I think we'll wrap up this section. Any other questions or comments from the board members? Before we move on, we'll take a break and then move on to the next item.
Okay, there was a lot of detailed information. Thanks for putting it together, presenting it in a way that was easy to sort of follow, keeping up to date on all the guidelines. I think it's important. I also thought, you know, it's right in the spirit of what the CDPH says, that the guidelines are really to have more kids in school in person for as much time as possible. And what I see here is a plan that follows that, is enabling that. And I admire the, the, the extra effort for the independent study. Liz's principal of, we want to make sure that they have a good experience in independent study, not just the bare minimum. So thanks for the putting this together in probably record time, right? I mean, most of this has been coming together since mid-July. So thanks.
Yeah, so on behalf of the board, thank you so much to all of you. I know how hard you're all working. And every day there's just a new requirement, a new pivot that's needed. So thank you. And I, I know in talking to some of our colleagues, you know, all the school districts are up against the same sort of thing. And I do feel like we're doing, you know, so much for the, for the kids in our district. So thank you. All right. So why don't we take a break? We'll take a five-minute break and we'll be back at nine, 10, please. And then we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right. Welcome back, everyone. Okay, so go ahead and get going with the next agenda item, which is 9.2, Discussion on School Assignments and School Committee Assignments. And, oh yeah, that's a double. Okay, all right. So I know we, we do this every year. In August, we kind of look at our assignments for the year. And as a reminder, we rotate the school and department assignments that we have. And then the committee assignments, there's an opportunity to make any changes to those we might want to make. I know we adjusted those somewhat last year.
Right.
So why don't we start with the committees? If you want to pull those up. And I guess I'll just ask the board members, are there any? Are there any of these that you would like to change? Either give up or anything that you're really wanting to do that you want to negotiate with somebody about?
I'm fine with mine, Alyssa.
Thank you, Maria.
So I wanted to, with the assignments, I know that I was in charge of Connect Charter School and with the whole pandemic thing. I know that we've had conversations with one of the board members from there. So if you, Alyssa, or anybody else wants to either switch or for Connect to continue with me, I'll be more than happy to do so.
Okay, great. So that's on the, the school one. And yeah, so I know, right, we, yes. So you've started to have some conversations with Connect towards the end of last school year over the summer. So that might make sense for you just to continue with that. That's fine with me. And I'm happy to take one of your assignments if you'd like.
That's fine.
Do you want to give me one of them? I can take, yeah, any one of them that you want. I'm happy to take any of them.
I mean, to be honest with you, I don't have a preference. Whatever you like. I'm fine with if you want to take. So I have Kennedy Facilities, Roy Cloud Untapped.
Okay, why don't I take facilities? So Eliana, if you can make that particular change just for this year. So what I would recommend is sort of keep the groupings the same because we typically have rotated those. But we'll just make a special change. So just put, you know, just change our names, in other words, in that column. And then we'll go back to the, the similar rotation next year. Although it does bring up a question. You know, we typically change these every year and it doesn't mean that you, you know, don't go out to the school site or don't pay attention to facilities or CDC or something like that. But it's just if somebody from that community has a question, they know at least they can go to one board member to try to get the answer. They have a point of reference. So, you know, I think there might be some years where it makes sense to do what Cecilia and I just did. Because they've just started a relationship. So I don't know if there's any others. We're kind of jumping back and forth. But are there any others on, on either of those lists that people would like to change? From what's been proposed in draft form? I think Maria said she was fine.
I, I mean, I have, I think, nine committee assignments and I'm willing to give one of those up if anybody wants to take extra assignments. But, you know, I'm fine with what I have too.
So are we looking at, we're looking at the board assignments, right? This, and, and these are the school ones that we're looking at at this point in time. So Cecilia, you're no longer going to be on facilities, but Alyssa will be. Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then she'll stay with Connect because she just started to have some conversations with them, which I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
All right. And again, it, you know, it's not to prevent another board member from, say, visiting a particular site or going to an event or anything like that. But it's just, at least there's some, some board member assigned to each of these, right?
Right.
And, and then similar to Janet, I'm fine, like if there's some of the committees here that folks are interested in joining. Speak up now or we'll just, let's be out for this year. Okay, looks like we're okay then, other than the one change we just made.
So then everybody's staying on their, on their committees that they have right now that I see on this chart?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think, because I think we just made adjustments to those in January of last year, right? Yeah. Mike's shaking his head.
Mike gave it right.
It was January of this year, I think.
Oh, thank you. Yes, January of last school year, but January of this calendar year. Yes, okay. I think, I think that sounds good with this. Anything else on 9.2 before we move on to the next item?
President McBoy. Since we did not make any changes to the committees. Are we bringing back that specific one for approval at the next board meeting? Or just the school assignments?
Just the school assignments. And we can probably put the school assignments on consent then.
Okay.
Right. And you're right, since we didn't make any changes. Well, you know, you could put, why don't you just put them both on consent so it's clear that, that way people will see it too, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, anything else? All right, so we're on to all of our various board policies. So I guess I'll turn that over to Ms. Wendy Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you. Here we go. Nice to see everyone again after a few moments there. So for the audience, if you want to draw your attention, if you are on board docs or on our board, board agenda, we are in item nine. So there are all of the items I'll be speaking about are listed there with attachments. So you can look over specific items. And I do want to appreciate the board for reading the very lengthy independent study board policy and ARs. I know Assistant Superintendent Ed Services Liz Wolf did a great job with going over a lot of the information that is pertinent. But the board policy is important because we will be on our third version over the course of a year and a half of revising this board policy with, most importantly, recent information from AB 130. So the current board policy that is proposed tonight outlines in detail the overview and the requirements. And the board memo really describes it well with the agreements, the parent teacher conferences needed and so forth. That all have to be within the independent study program. So very different than we've experienced that in the past. So I want to make that clear. All of these policies, including this one, are sent to us by CSBA and reviewed by the Board Policy Committee. And potentially our attorney. So I'll go through that as we progress along tonight. The Board Policy on Independent Study was reviewed by multiple people. And it really outlines, you know, I don't want to be redundant with what Liz spoke about earlier. But the communication and the need for parents to fully understand what they'll be getting into with this type of new learning environment and the dedication needed for parents. And the importance of the school district being on top of the evaluation systems and the educational progress of students. And also, we've, we've dedicated, as Liz mentioned, Dr. Al Rosell to, who's our Director of Family Engagement and Outreach, will be overseeing independent study. And we have hired fully credentialed teachers. So those are much of the elements that are written within this program and this policy, including the ARs. So Alyssa, would you like me to go through anything in more detail? Anything to point out specifically or shall we answer questions from the board?
Yeah, I think, I think answering question is fine. And just as, I think you said this, but just for the record, this is the first reading and discussion. So certainly if any audience member has a comment for us, that they would like us to take that and consider prior to coming back with the final at our next board meeting, this is the opportunity to do so. So I know that board members have already been in conversation with you. If they had questions or comments, you've counted for those. So if there's anything else from board members, any other questions or comments you have? And then I am going to just check to make sure there's no comments coming in.
And I'll add one more item. Thank you, Alyssa, for that point. On the board memo, we did note that this is a first reading with a second reading on August 25th and a public hearing at that date. So this is a great time to have the discussion. And as Alyssa mentioned, we can take back suggestions and so forth, so that we can bring that forward on the 25th.
Can you just explain what course-based independent study is versus just the master's agreement one? That was, because some of that felt redundant, but I can tell that it's talking about something a little bit different.
Sure. Liz, did you want to answer that or would you like me to?
I can, I can. So it's basically if a student, if there's a course is not offered by a school. And again, this is usually for high school and the student wants to take a course that is of special interest to him or her, they can take an independent study and just study on their own.
Okay, so that wouldn't fall into what you just presented?
No, no, no. We're the traditional, not, not course-based.
Okay.
Okay, so any other questions or comments on this one? Okay. Go on to the next one. 9.4, which is drug and alcohol-free schools.
Yes, thank you. So this is a board policy that is new that prohibits the possession, use, or sale of drugs or alcohol by any person on district property. And I'm pointing that out because subsequent, a subsequent policy I'll be speaking about addresses district property. And in regards to cannabis, that's later. So the, and it includes Prop 64, which prohibits any person from possessing, smoking, or ingesting cannabis on school grounds while children are present. So this is new to the board. Any questions?
Okay. Doesn't look like there's any questions. So we're on to 9.5 with.
All right, I'm going to interrupt real quick.
Go ahead, Janet.
Just one thing I just noticed. It looks like there was a he-she that slipped past the committee.
Oh goodness, thank you for catching that.
The bottom of the first, I've lost it. Where is it? Well, now I can't find it.
I just found it. So it's in the, it's on page. I guess it's on the first page, A, at the very bottom, under enforcement and discipline. We'll just need to change that today.
Definitely.
He-she.
Appreciate that.
Eagle-eyed Janet, she's on it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Appreciate that. Okay.
Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and move on to the lactation accommodation.
Yes, this is a new policy that is referred to for employees. So the 4000s, this is 4,033, affect employees. So in this particular policy, it affects the employee's right to request lactation accommodation. And how the district will respond in terms of a space that's private. And making accommodations for that person. Are there any questions?
I, just going back real quick, Wendy, to the previous one on the drug and alcohol-free schools. I see there was one question in the chat about, does this include vaping materials and items? And I would say, yes, it does include that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Smoking is defined by vaping and other types of, and cigarettes. We've known it back in the day.
Yeah, I think it's a good question because probably there's even a greater use with vaping than the more traditional sorts. Okay, great. Okay, all right. So nothing on the lactation accommodation. So the next one is the architectural and engineering services.
Yes, I appreciate Don Diaz reviewing this one, especially in light of all of our bond construction and so forth. And he also passed it through DWK. So this policy really describes the district's responsibility in choosing and selecting a licensed architect and/or structural engineer as required by law. And so it outlines the negotiations and so forth that needs to entail that, that contract.
All right, any questions? Yeah, questions or comments? All right. On to. It's nice that we have a policy committee and all of our staff that, and CSBA that does all the hard work to make this easy for us, right?
Yes.
So thank you.
Yeah, so the time the board takes to read all these in advance is very, very helpful. So thank you for that.
Okay, so the last one, 9.7 is on administering medication and monitoring health conditions.
Yes, so this was also reviewed by our nursing staff regarding administering medication and health conditions. So this is an update. We've had much of this in place. However, we did need to address new Senate Bill 233, which will allow the, the board through a policy to make a determination about where medicinal cannabis that is prescribed to a student would be given and by whom. So in this particular first read, the recommendation is that, of course, we will honor any medicine that a physician will need to prescribe. However, the parent and guardian would need to administer the medicinal cannabis off campus. So that's the primary goal for this particular one in regards to cannabis. Are there any questions about this particular one?
And so I think if I remember correctly, that means that the parent will have to go into the office and sign the student out. Bring them off campus, administer it, bring them back on and sign them back in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can I share an opinion here? The read of this, I was a little uncomfortable sort of getting, I was struggling to get comfortable around it. Because the read of it kind of gives the impression that the board's inserting itself into this medical plan and decision for a student. That's, you know, the plan that's legal in the state of California. And in fact, the new state law says that, you know, the school district isn't even compelled to take that action. So I totally understand that state laws and conflict with federal law. And that that can probably cause a problem for the school district such as ours that receives, you know, federal funding. But I thought it'd be, it might be more comfortable if, I don't know if this is, if the intent of the board is not to do that, right? If we could make that a little clearer in the policy, assuming that the other board members agree with that. You know, so follow that conflict between state and federal law, but, but maybe say something along the lines of, you know, in that paragraph that, you know, it's not the board's intent to interfere, but because of the, because of the conflict between state and federal law is kind of compelled to prohibit this onsite. The way I read it first was just like, yeah, it was just coming into a blanket ban when the new law says clearly you don't have to do that in California. I get that there's the conflict and so we want to take that stance. But if our intent is not to be making that interference, but we're just feeling like we have to because of the situation a lot. I think we could add some language to just clarify that. And it might, it might make this policy feel a little more enduring, we read in the future.
And Mike, that's a good statement because, you know, there is that direct conflict between the state and the feds. And we receive quite a bit of federal dollars and we don't want to jeopardize those federal dollars at all. So if there's some way, Wendy, that maybe you could work if, with what Mike has just stated, with our attorney that will, will give it that, that flavor. That would be great if the rest of the board members are in agreement.
I am. I think that, you know, I was struggling with it as well because I thought, what if the child really only gets what it needs from this particular substance? And I felt like I would be, like Mike said, inserting myself into policing kind of thing. So I would appreciate any language changes that could achieve that goal. Thank you.
I think we can address that, Mike, at the bottom of page one, where it discussed the conflict between state and federal law. Perhaps changing the word, "the board prohibits." So I'll work with county council on that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and I'll just let you know that when Janet and I met with Wendy, we were, we had, you know, they, they sort of provided a few different options. And we were trying to figure out the option that was the most student-focused and family. What I want to say, not inclusive, but what's the word I'm looking for? Sort of acknowledging, you know, anyway. So we were trying to figure out the thing that felt more, the most inclusive and honoring the student. My, yeah. My, yeah. So what's that within the legal parameters that we are given, right? And so, yeah, so I think if we can add the language, that would be good for Janet and I, because I know we were sort of struggling a little bit as well. So, okay, so I think we're in agreement. So maybe Wendy, you can, yeah, like you said, work with county council, just to make sure whatever we say is, is okay. And then, okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for bringing that up. Any other comments or questions on this one? Okay. All right, good. Well, there was, those were our first readings. And like you said, Wendy, they'll be coming back for a public hearing and a final approval by the board at the next board meeting, right? Okay, perfect. Okay, so next item consent items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Janet and Maria is a second. Roll call vote, please.
Percy Wells.
Aye.
Percy Lawson.
Aye.
Percy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Okay, we're on to 11.1, which is adopt, adoption of resolution one, sufficiency of instructional materials.
So this comes before you every year that we need to have this resolution. You must approve it and move forward. And this is, these are guidelines that we are definitely in sync with, and we will move forward in this direction with the sufficient amount of materials that is needed. And Liz Wolf works very closely with Carla, what's Carla's last name? I cannot remember.
Malatia.
Yes, who works for us at the IMC, who does a fantastic job of making sure that all of our students have all the materials they need, starting on the first day of school.
Okay, so any comments, questions before we move forward with it? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'm on. Second.
All right, Cecilia with the second from Maria. Roll call vote, please.
Percy Wells.
Aye.
Percy Lawson.
Aye.
Percy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Does the kitty want to say something?
She's missed you all.
We've missed her too, our, our mascot for the board meetings. That's wonderful. Okay, all right, adoption of resolution two, sending of preschool programs.
Right, this will give us the funding for our preschool program. We also do this every school year. And during this point in time, we have the funding that is presented to our director and principal for the child development centers and she moves forward with this resolution and the agreement. And so this is brought to you for approval to move it on so that we can continue with our great CDC program that we have within the Redwood City School District.
All right, any comments or questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second.
All right, Maria and Mike, the second roll call vote, please.
Percy Wells.
Aye.
Percy Lawson.
Aye.
Percy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, adoption of resolution three, approval of education code options for teaching assignments.
Go ahead, Wendy, this is HR.
Right. So you've seen this come to you from time to time. We have an opportunity for a great teacher here, Mr. Drum, to teach computer science at MIT. And the California teaching credentialing allows for teachers who hold credentials, should they have enough units in their undergraduate and graduate career to have the equivalent of another credential. So taking their previous teaching experience, their successes and the fact that they're credentialed already, this allows our teachers to teach either an elective or actually another subject because they understand how to teach. Now it's just applying new content. So in this particular case, we would like this teacher to teach a computer science elective course and he has the units.
Did you say this is at MIT?
Yes.
Great. Wonderful for the kids. It's awesome. All right, any comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Janet and Mike, second sit. Roll call vote, please.
Percy Wells.
Aye.
Percy Lawson.
Aye.
Percy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, the next one is provision, provisional internship permit.
Okay. So in this particular case, we have Ms. Donnis, who was a wonderful guest teacher over at Hoover and in the spring. And she is now going to, upon your approval, be hired as the newcomer teacher at Hoover. She does have her bachelor's degree and so forth and is working towards all of her appropriate requirements to be on the pathway of a credentialed teacher. Last spring, she was supervised, evaluated and given guidance and informal feedback by the site principal at Hoover. So we're pleased to bring this provisional permit to you, which is the equivalent of an emergency credential through the eyes of the state and an approved credential that teachers can utilize in teaching a classroom. We're excited for Ms. Donnis to move forward in her teaching career.
All right, any comments or questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Janet and Maria with the second. Roll call vote.
Percy Wells.
Aye.
Percy Lawson.
Aye.
Percy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Okay, and it looks like I skipped over 11.4 accidentally. Yeah, that's why Wendy, I know you're sort of like.
Like, oh.
Uh oh, yeah. So this one would be resolution for reduction of certain classified services.
Thank you. So I'm bringing to you at this time of year, a classified employee layoff with a resolution. We have two deaf and hard to hearing education interpreters that are recommended to be laid off because of lack of work due to reduced enrollment. However, these individuals are eligible to apply for open vacancies within our classified staff. And we also have an office assistant through the preschool and instructional assistants through preschool and then one at Roy Cloud. All three of those positions are vacant. However, these positions are recommended to be laid off once again due to lower enrollment and thus the need for a reduction of clerical staff to support registrations or fewer registrations. The instructional assistant at Roy Cloud, the point four six six was site funded but vacant since the 2019 school year. Are there any questions about this particular item?
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mike with the second from Maria. Roll call vote, please.
Percy Wells.
Aye.
Percy Lawson.
Aye.
Percy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, 11.6, approval of local assignment options in areas of special skill and preparation outside of credential authorization.
So this is an exciting moment because we in HR spend a lot of time ensuring that the properly credentialed people are teaching courses. We do that a lot. We have Griselda in my office that manages credentials all day long. And so I'm excited that our board does, does review local assignment options. It is one of the options approved by the CTC, similar to an ed code, as I just described earlier with the teacher at MIT, where we have fully credentialed individuals who, because of either scheduling requirements or in this case elective classes, are requesting to teach something in which either they do not have a single subject credential for, or the students in which they're teaching span outside of the grade level they teach during the day. So a perfect example of this is at North Star where fourth through eighth grade students are mixed for elective time. We have a fourth grade teacher with a multiple subject credential. Then that person needs to be teaching fourth grade, but with this local assignment option approved by the board, that teacher is then authorized to teach fourth through eighth grade in one particular area. So the attachments to this board memo are the forms that are required from a previous policy, or excuse me, from ed code that the board considered three years ago to give authorization for the board to approve. Very similar to an ed code option. The only difference here are that teachers have experiences in their background versus university units. That's really the difference in all of these applications. Or else we'd be applying for an ed code waiver. So are there any questions about the process or the the courses or what have you that people are interested in teaching for electives specifically? And they're spanning different schools. In this case, we have MIT and North Star reflected. However, all schools are offering electives, but Griselda went through and, and we ruled out a lot of people already taking electives that are teaching within their credential or have a single subject credential. We've narrowed it down. So I'm bringing these to you tonight and then I'll bring you a few on the 25th before their classes start.
I'll just point out, there's also a Hoover teacher that's.
And Hoover teacher, yes, thank you.
You've got, you've got three sites there. And these are always, these are always elective. So they're not, I mean, this kind of approval as opposed to the other one, is it always for electives or would that be? I mean, because this time it is.
No, it's a good question. The board has the capability to authorize core classes. We just haven't brought that to the board or we haven't needed to yet.
Okay. I'll move to approve if we're ready.
Yep, I think we are. Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Okay, Cecilia, second sit. Roll call vote, please.
Percy Wells.
Aye.
Percy Lawson.
Aye.
Percy Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right. And as a reminder, 11.7 was approved under the consent agenda. Okay, so we're on to board and superintendent reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. The only thing that I have is that we visited some of the summer school, actually all the summer school sites. So it was great to see the kids in action. And, you know, again, it was very exciting to know that we're going to have a lot more kids than we are. So that's all I have.
Same, and it was exciting. And thanks Liz for touring us, being our tour guide through it. And of course, all the, all the site administrators that toured us, the teachers, the classrooms we got to barge in on, the office staff that chatted with us about how the school days are going. It was incredible to see the kids all masked up, many of them working in collaborative groups, oftentimes outside. It was, I don't know, it looked like a great summer program. Everyone, it always seemed very engaged. So it was, I loved it.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say the same thing. So I think Cecilia and John and I went around to the, to the programs together. And it was so fun to see the kids back in the classroom and so excited to show off what they've been working on and show their art projects and their science projects and squirt me with water for the, the water play that they were working on. And it was really neat to see the kids from so many different schools coming together onto different campuses. And so they were getting to meet each other and explore new campuses and they seem to be really enjoying it. So that was great. And I think, John, you have a plan to continue that again next year. Is that, I think that's correct. Yeah.
That's the plan.
Fantastic. Really excited about that.
Yeah. And I thank Liz for putting it together because it's really, you know, different than what we've had in the past. And I know in the schools that we were visiting with Janet, Janet and Cecilia were with me, the kids were saying, you know, it's the last week, because I think we were there on a Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, and it was Friday. And then some of them were really, you know, sad that it was ending, that the next day was the last day. And they wanted it to go on. So it was a great experience for kids.
And John, I just say the thanks really goes to Michelle Griffith and Susanna Fernandez, putting that together. They spent days and days and days organizing that and training the teachers and the staff development people who brought all the materials together. It was, it was a team effort. So they worked really hard to make sure that it was successful.
And Liz, I know we did get the, I think all the curriculum got sent to us and it was amazing. And there was so much information in there. I couldn't even spend enough time digging through all of it. It was fantastic to see what you put together for them. And then I will also add, I know that there were some kids that were referring to it as summer camp. So it was not school for them.
Right.
And I would echo that. I want to thank everybody that was involved. It was really fun to see the students enjoying their summer school. I spoke to several of them and they do recommend it. Over previous years, they were enjoying it and learning at the same time. So you guys did a a great job according to the student rating. So thank you very much for making it a success and we hope to see more of that next year.
And I believe next, at the next board meeting, it's a summer school, you know, the update, you know, if I'm not mistaken, that we'll have with pitchers and so forth.
Sure, yes. Thanks for the reminder.
We'll get Susanna and Michelle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. I was thinking the highest compliment you can get from a kid is that it's a summer camp, right? So, and that they want to be there again. So that's awesome. Okay. I'll just mention that I had a few meetings in July. Safe routes to schools met a few times and I was able to connect a couple of them with Dr. Baker, who in turn connected them with principals. And they're really trying to work on some additional public transportation options for kids to get to school. Kind of reinvigorating all of our SAM Trans activity. And then also some other things around safe routes to schools. And then we also had a couple of housing discussions with our committee, Janet, John and I did. And then also we had a policy committee meeting, I think, probably one or two. I don't know. Okay, so that's it. How about Dr. Baker?
So our principals are back, all our site administrators are back and we had three days with them last week. Yeah, it was, was, was last week, right? And that was exciting. It was great. We had hoped to meet in person, but that wasn't able to happen. So we are now, we met virtually. And we have also Liz and the staff development team to put together some professional development that was taking place this week that started on Monday, Tuesday, and it ended today, if I'm not mistaken. And tomorrow, we are meeting with 87 new teachers virtually, eight o'clock in the morning. So that'll be exciting. So we're, we're looking forward, we're very much looking forward to that.
Eighty-seven new teachers. That's awesome. And I think next, well, I guess either at the next board meeting or at some point, you'll share with us a little more of the data on enrollment and maybe we can see on the teachers as well. That's always useful information.
Definitely.
Thank you. I did want to just mention, I was on the county elected call yesterday. I don't know if any of the rest of you were able to make it to that. So this was sort of a continuation of the weekly calls we had been having for a while and they took a break over the summer and when they thought COVID was better, we weren't having them. So I don't know if they'll start back up again, but we did hear from Congresswoman Jackie Speer and Assembly Member Kevin Mullen and Dr. Scott Murrow. And I think you covered a lot of that, Dr. Baker, in the presentation tonight, because Nancy McGee was there as well. But yeah, I mean, they're very. But, yeah, I mean, they're very bullish on in-person learning with masks. And I think, and that's probably the most relevant thing for schools. I will say that, you know, similar to what we're seeing in other counties and other places, they're just encouraging the vaccine because people with a vaccine have better outcomes. So. Anyway, and then they did make some recommend, they'd made some predictions on when younger children might be able to get vaccinated. But I will say that Mercedes, who was on the call, who's actually a doctor, had prediction as well. So, you know, sometime, sometime in the next couple of months to six months, I think is what we're hearing. So those were kind of the main things I heard. Okay. That's it. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Okay, any information? No, and there's none. Correspondence? Any correspondence? Guess we've been getting a few emails from parents trying to answer those. Yeah.
Right. And a lot of emails regarding independent study being put on the list. That one, a couple today, take off the list. So things like that.
All right. Well, thank you for all your work in terms of just how quickly things are changing. That's for sure. Okay. Other business suggested items for future agenda. Anything we need to be adding that, you know, we have a lot of the normal kind of stuff, of course. I don't know, is the calendar? Think I. Yeah, I don't think we have the calendar up yet, do we?
No, that will be presented at the next board meeting.
Okay, okay.
Some updates.
All right. Well, once we see that, maybe we'll have some other items, but, okay, terrific. Okay, so, yeah. So we'll just see it at the next one. But our next meeting, that would be an important one, is August 25th. Oh, and one thing, just for our audience, I think we already shared with board members, is that we are assuming at this point we'll do virtual meetings through the end of September, which we're legally allowed to do. And then hopefully, things will be a little better in our community with regards to COVID, and we can get back to in-person. But we'll be ready to do whatever is needed to keep meeting, right?
Yes, and we, and even though we come back to in-person, as Kyle pointed out earlier, we do have the cameras now set up in the boardroom so that we can still be in person and still do it virtually for our community members, our teachers and staff who want to attend, but don't want to come in person. So that'll be in place. And then hopefully, I will talk to Kyle about the, the mics, because we do need to get new mics. And he got a price on himself. Find out and see how soon we can get those.
Right.
Right, Kyle? He said unmute. I'm sorry, yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Kyle.
All right. So I think we're at the end of the meeting.
Elise, can I ask a question real fast? Do we have a Friday meeting coming up? I have a hold on my calendar, but I can't decide if we just didn't do that at some point.
Right, no, we do, Mike. You are correct. I believe it's the 27th. It's the 27th, and we're hoping to hold it from nine to, we said two, but we may be out earlier than that.
And I think we decided to do that via Zoom, right? Yeah, so it'll be virtual.
Right.
Is that okay with everybody? Hopefully, that's what you have saved, Mike.
No, no, I, I have this Friday marked off, but I knew by today that it wasn't happening. So.
And, yeah, and I was going to touch base with you tomorrow. Regarding this, because tomorrow's our, our day that, meet with yourself and, and Maria.
President McAvoy.
Yes.
Will this meeting be a board retreat?
Yes. Yeah. So there may be some items that are open session and some that are closed session. We'll have to come up with an agenda. So we'll let you know. Yeah. Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Have a good week and happy start of school soon.
Yes, very soon.
Okay, take care, everyone.
Bye.